So I will go. I always forget that you have to do that.
That's okay.
I'm glad it said that. So I'll call the meeting to order and call the role. So Commissioner Brown, here. Commissioner Bootark, here. Mr. Jordan, here. Commissioner Snodgrass. Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Solis is joining us from New York.
Who would want to miss the planning commission meeting?
Yes, just can't get enough excitement here. Okay, so let's see, we have the minutes. So I will go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So who?
Okay, in a second. Any discussion or change, recommend the changes? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Michelle, do we have anyone in the waiting room?
We do not.
Okay, I will dispense with reading the notice. And we will move on to our agenda. And the item on the agenda tonight is the tree ordinance study set we've all received. Back to the information on that, which was very nicely done by Roxanne. Very much appreciate your work on that. And so we'll go ahead.
Okay. Did you have anything? You go. Okay, great. Yeah, I do sound like garbage. I am, sorry. All right, so we're gonna talk a little bit more about the tree ordinance update. And hopefully get some more feedback on those things, oh. On some more items within the proposed changes. So last week, two weeks ago, we talked about opportunities within the tree ordinance update, you know, the ability to make this more clear, to utilize best available science and methods. Within the update and also make this more enforceable since a lot of the things that we deal with day to day and planners doing our development review. The landscaping code and the design manual overlap in ways that make confusing, sometimes unclear, and it makes it hard to enforce. Oh, and if you were watching or privy to the city council study session, we know that we want to make sure that we have it clear so that we're trying to get to compliance with folks. I know exactly what we're asking. Last time we met, we talked about the indicators of sustainable forest management. This is part of what the consultants, Davey Resource Group, are using to develop our urban forestry management plan. So this, again, just kind of as a refresher. Kind of gives you an idea of where we are with our urban forest management. So maybe like a C minus. And then we have these draft goals that we also looked at last time we met and I didn't do as much in this presentation to tie what we're talking about into the urban forest management goals because I think so were pretty self evident. I'm not gonna necessarily go A, B, C, D, E, F, G for you all. You all are smart. Okay. So the first thing I wanted to discuss was formalizing definitions of screening buffer and perimeter area areas. These come up a lot in both the design manual and the landscaping code, but they they're not really defined. Their current implied definition, the code is on the screen. I was curious what you all might think about using kind of codify the implied definitions, or if you think these are proper in thinking about tree retention and removal and landscaping. Or not. If this is a little abstract, I can try and come up with some examples that might help you think about how this is applied.
What's the thoughts from the group on this?
I'd like to hear an example too.
Okay, so yeah, when we're thinking about how we maybe divide a residential use from a non-residential use, those are considered incompatible uses. So we require a forty foot vegetative buffer to screen those uses from one another. And maybe Robert can jump in here too. It just is sometimes unclear what the intent of the vegetative area is and I think people get a little tripped up because these words are used so interchangeably. Maybe I didn't frame it up the best here. But Robert.
Well, yeah, I think so not having definitions, so examples of because not every, not every situation is gonna be the same. Sometimes you know, separating a commercial zone and use from residential is obvious. There's there's traffic, there's noise. So there are the nuisance kinds of things that you maybe want to to buffer. But maybe it's it's unsightly for whatever reason. Maybe it's, you know, a car lot or something and we don't have a lot of those, but just as an example, that just it it's not something that residential neighborhood wants to see. But we use the same, that same sort of language in situations where you don't necessarily want to screen from view. Maybe just sort of the nuisance stuff, so like sports complex as an example. You know, screaming fields, sports fields where kids and folks are, you know, playing and running around. That's not necessarily unsightly or something that you want to block. That could be a part of the neighborhood, that could be part of the community and and, you know, watching kids play Little League or whatever. So I think I think what what is is needed, and again, you know, whatever thoughts pop into your head. How would we better, well, since we don't have a definition at all, how would we define these terms as they're used in different parts of the code? So again, you know, screening is really a visual piece. The buffer is both separating incompatible uses but can also be a protective. So a buffer from, you know, critical area or something. And then and then the perimeter is kind of both. But it's not really clear, again, what that purpose it is. And is it is it a buffer? Is it screening? So we're just trying to come up with ways to make these clear and maybe just examples of you know, obscure from view when, you know, it's visually incompatible or something.
Maybe we can come back to this one. Most people have thoughts now.
Where where is once in the buffer or the screen defined? I mean, is the assumption that it's just made of growth or?
Most of the time.
Most of the time, right, landscaping of some sort.
And where is the width and the measurable qualities defined? Is that in the design manual or?
Primarily, but again, also in the code.
Boy, I encourage as much definition as you can come up with and examples.
Yeah, I I I think that that makes sense. What also might be on the table at some point is consolidating, taking some of the language that's in the design manual, putting it in the landscape code or vice versa. But it is really confusing to folks to have to look in both places to figure out what applies to them. So part of this is also where it lives in the code. And and standardizing these terms of that.
Commissioner Snodgrass.
Well, I have a question. Because as you stated, there is overlap in these. In my job, I'm completely on base, I know exactly what those are and and whenever, so I'm curious. Why are you concerned? What questions are you receiving from people that that make you believe that there is confusion in these? And then based on but he said, I I have another. Are there specific parameters to what's required in a screen, be it, you know, depth or height?
Obscurity.
Versus a buffer versus a perimeter, you know, is that the difference between these things is what's required? And that would be my my question, also my feedback on how it gets defined.
Yeah, some of these things have specific numerical standards, but almost all of them have numerical standards of some sort. But they're not always tied to the impact that we're trying to protect against. And I think I think that's that's part of where we want to go with this. And, you know, I mean, at some point, we are going to obviously bring back you know, draft language for for your commission to review and see if it's captured. And this is just sort of to get the ideas and conversation going to kind of, you know, it's it's a warm up for what we're gonna come back with, which will have some of these things spelled out. And then some ideas about, you know, taking things out of one section, consolidating it to to some degree. But I think I think where the confusion comes in is we we have a lot of folks who and and actually, some of the 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 issue really almost involves the the design review board too, who review a lot of you know, folks needing or wanting to reduce these buffers. So for instance, the buffer between two different zone districts, residential, commercial is the best example. And and because forty feet is a lot, and if you have it on more than one side, well, depends on the it's always site specific and project specific.
Intensity of use.
Yeah, right. And so so one thought is to have, you know, maybe some sort of sliding scale almost, or something that allows more flexibility. We don't have the ability to change any of the numerical standards that are in the design manual, for instance. So forty feet between commercial and and residential zone. Or there's one project I'm thinking of for a long skinny lot that's actually really impactful. And so so they they want the design review board to weigh in on that. And without sort of fleshing out what the purpose is and and being a little bit more explicit about maybe when forty feet isn't, you know, isn't required, maybe something less. So there just seems to be some, because people come in and and try to get these reduced, it's not always just to maximize their their development. It really is, you know, parcel specific. But I I think if if we can, if we can zoom in on what the intent is and and make that something that is more easily analyzed, I guess, whether it's by the DRB or whether it's by staff. I think I think that's one area where more clarity can help. It's, you know, when people come in for for variances or exceptions over and over for the same thing, it's usually a sign that you really kind of need to to take another look at what the purpose is of of that particular restriction and make sure, again, not to, you know, maximize the developer's bottom line or whatever. But really, because it's not necessarily, it it's it's a blunt instrument, right? It's it's being used across the board and not taking into account what the particular impact could be and how maybe other ways to mitigate that might be just as as efficient. All of that being said, of course, we love more green. But that's the balance, right? That's what we're always trying to strike.
Well, I want to go to Commissioner Bradbury. I'm for sure, Bradbury.
Uh, yes, I I would like to make two or three comments here. First, an answer to the question would be yes. I would recommend that these words be defined in a very simple way, such as you have on the screen. The word screen, obscure from view, I think is good. Buffer, rather than say incompatible uses, I would use something a little more descriptive. Like differing zones or something specific like that. Perimeter is fine. That's what we're talking about, the outer boundaries of a lot. And I would finally add that where those words are used in the context of of any regulation further defines what we mean by the use of that word in that context. So I I would vote for a very simple definition with the idea that no matter what we do, there are always going to be exceptions that have to be considered. And so what constitutes then an exception is an important part of any ordinance. Specifically how people can go about getting that that difference addressed. So that those are my comments on this this question.
Thank you. Commissioner Solis?
Yeah, a couple of things. At first, I thought that screen and buffer were really the same thing, but you kind of illuminated me a little bit about the buffer being something on the order of forty feet and that the screen is sort of just a mild kind of blockage, not necessarily a complete block. Perhaps the thing to say is, you know, maybe to quantify a screen as being twenty-five percent of what the buffer is, because you're you're not trying for a complete buffer, you're, I think of this as in the at the corner of Burnham and Peacock Hill at Harbor Hill. For about a quarter mile, there's a really nice buffer that you that was created when it first came in a few years. I thought I thought to myself, that's not gonna work. But a few years later, there's pine trees growing, there's shrubbery, and it looks like it's about forty feet. I could be wrong about that. But that's buffering between the development itself and Peacock Road. That seems like a pretty good example. You could put in your example book. Screening is a little bit harder for me to kind of get my hand around. But I guess you don't really want to necessarily obscure, but you want to sort of limit the view in some way, shape or form. So maybe one is the buffer is broader and the screen is narrower depending upon the particular use. And I would say perimeter is fine as is. I'm not quite sure what the intent of that one is, but I'm not an expert on design review board components.
Thank you. For sure, Berger.
I was just, the question that came to my mind was would it be important to account for the maturity of the existing trees? So like one you know, just leaving space where there's a lot of maybe tall skinny trees that you can see right through anyway. As opposed to where you're gonna create a new buffer, what what would that require? And then would that also look not just at the point in time that it was approved, but throughout what's gonna grow there and what will form to be a better buffer? You know, over the years. Uh, the only other point would maybe be, how would you allow for the topography? So if it was you know, it's just a hillside that's kind of already creating a buffer anyway, is there, you know, how do you how do you account for that or define that?
You know, that is a good question. Well, thank you.
Pardon me, one quick question. When you guys look at this, do you plan for like what it's gonna look like in five years? As opposed to what it's gonna look like the day after you plant it? Because those are two different things.
I mean, to an extent, yeah, you hope that. We do have what's it called, landscape bond, so that, you know, the the number of trees that are planted, you know, in certain number and all the other landscaping, a certain amount has to survive. I think it's like eighty percent has to survive. Otherwise, you have to replace it. So, yeah, we do think about how it's going to look in a number of years. I mean, because, yeah, if you plant a screen but then cut it down, it's not exactly screening.
But not not necessarily, you know, species specific. At least that's not been my experience, looking at landscape plans will look at, you know, make sure. You know, there's a, you know, we 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 prefer native, no invasives and things like that. But in terms of you know, coverage and canopy and all of that. Not not to a large extent. That's I'm part of that is, you know, not all of us have training in, you know, landscape architecture or whatever. But but it's something that we can definitely drill down into and even use that kind of language in the code to say, you know, shall result in, you know, dot, 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 whatever we're looking for in terms of height, fullness, that kind of thing.
Is that what you meant, Commissioner Solis, like thinking about kind of the 3D aspect of it over time?
Yeah, I mean, it is, that's right, because you wanna you wanna plan for what it's gonna look like in time, not necessarily initially and there's probably a a timing or a formula that would make sense, but it's it's just a notion off the top of my head, so you guys can think about it more.
I think that's really smart. I think as as Roxy suggested, most of our focus has been on survivability, right? And making sure that there's they're properly irrigated when they're young and and that they exist there, you know, for for in perpetuity to some extent, and not so much thinking ahead about how everything's gonna fit together. And again, fullness, height, all of that. I don't think that's been a focus, but that's certainly something that we could work into the code.
Okay, thank you all for commenting on a very, on my part, poorly defined set of definitions. You gave us a lot of good stuff to think about. Any comments on this topic? Okay, great. Next topic. To the city formalized irrigation standards, we currently have no definition or guidance for what irrigation is or what it should look like. So here are two different central definitions. And then on the next slide, I have a definition for like your an irrigation system that we can think about together. So I'll give you just look through the definition of irrigation.
Talk a little bit more about this reliability issue. We are, is eighty eighty percent of the planted stuff has to survive? Why is it eighty, I wonder?
I mean, there's going to be some amount of die off just because not everything's going to survive.
But if something, if something dies in the shrubbery around my house, my wife makes me So what I'm really asking is I'm wondering about whether irrigation standards are needed if the developer or whomever has the obligation to replace anything that dies. You see what I'm saying?
Feels redundant to.
Well, it feels like maybe we don't need to tell them how to water the plants. I mean, the issue really is survivability, I think.
I do agree to that point. Maybe, you know, you, there is a an advantage to having the flexibility, you know, because people can, you know, have different sites, different topography that may or may not work with our defined types of irrigation. One, excuse me, case I can think of is some folks are having to replant a tree after they were trying to cut down a pretty big tree in their backyard. And they were saying that they couldn't irrigate, they couldn't, they didn't, they shouldn't have to replant because they didn't have room or they didn't have the ability to irrigate. And we suggested like a different type of irrigation system, I think with water bags or something. And in that case, if we had had that codified, you know, like this is what we want to see, I think it would have been a little bit easier to enforce in that, in that particular situation.
Does that need to be spelled out that you need to be able to provide X, X, Y, and Z before you're allowed to cut down the tree? Provided it's not an emergency situation?
I mean, yeah, that's part of a of a landscaping plan. You need to show irrigation. Yeah, Commissioner.
So I wonder if, I kind of like the notion of, you know, not specifying yeah, have irrigation, but you mentioned you hold a bond, a performance bond. And I'm wondering.
For development projects, not for just like
Jever Jane homeowner, no.
But, okay, so let me back up then. Presumably, a homeowner, we're talking about like there's one thing in your backyard and then in my house, there's a clearly a buffer that separates my house from a apartment complex that was part of the development. This part of the subdivision. I could cut down a tree in my backyard all I wanted, but and then when I get into that buffer area, that's really what we're talking about. You don't want homeowners cutting down vegetation in buffer areas.
I know what you're talking about, well, because, you know, if you cut down a tree in your backyard and you're you're required to replant. Because we talked about it last time, I think most folks were in favor of replanting after cutting down a significant tree. Like that tree has to survive somehow.
Oh, okay, so let's back up a bit further. So there must be six foot high, six, eight inch diameter. And so we have that. And if I cut down that tree in my backyard, the city's expectation is that I plant a replacement tree.
Yeah, or two.
Or two, or whatever to, and is that a permit that you have to go to?
It's a pre-permit, though.
All right, so I just want to make sure I understand this. So for the developer where I was going, that's developing the the subdivision. You, you know, it feels like if you have a performance bond and they choose not to irrigate, maybe an alternative is you hold more than, instead of eighty percent or eighty percent of the value, maybe you hold ninety percent of the value.
We currently hold a hundred and ten percent.
Okay, maybe you hold a hundred and twenty.
Right.
And or if they choose to irrigate, then you could reduce that somehow, because irrigation is gonna help.
That would be a carrot.
Well, we've been ones that have stated that they absolutely have no way of irrigating like that one, since we have all those trees they took down. We told them they they had an option of a bond or to provide water banks or irrigation, other irrigation. So they they could get a bond or irrigate.
I'm just wondering if you, alternatives, options are always good. For, if developers smart, going to say, I'm just gonna irrigate it because I'm gonna forget about this, I'm gonna be come back and plant trees five years from now. But I also recognize that over time, that buffer area is gonna grow up and irrigation isn't gonna be necessary because the survival is gonna be high.
Oh, so yeah, irrigation is required for it's usually for the first, like, few growing seasons, so like, minimum two years usually.
Right.
Is where you need the irrigation.
But could you say we won't require that, but we'll require a bigger bond? And just give give developers options.
But then that puts the onus on us to then have to take care of, use that bond and it really is that's that's a stick, right? But to actually encourage people to do that instead of irrigating, that's that's stress on the city. Frankly, we have to go hire somebody, use that money and and then take care of it ourselves. That's not, it's not preferred generally. And and the other thing about about requiring irrigation, at least for those first, you know, critical couple of years while things are are needing to establish. By by virtue of putting on your plan, which we require for for most development, certainly big development, like you're talking about. Putting that on the plan means that they have consulted with somebody that understands their landscape plan, understands what kind of irrigation is needed. They've thought it all through. And so the likelihood that that's going to fail is is far less than, yeah, we're gonna plant these trees, you know. They'll probably be fine. I mean, it, you know what I mean, like it is and even for a homeowner who, you know, needed to go through that. It it also becomes an enforcement issue if if they don't. And it and it is required, you know, for us to to sort of be looking over their shoulder a lot more to make sure that it it doesn't die off the first year because they didn't water it. So I think I think there are benefits to requiring it pretty much across the board. It's just how much detail, how much, you know, do people need to invest in that? Particularly in situations where maybe they can't irrigate. And then and that that sort of implicates what we talked about a little bit, having a fund. If you can't, you have no way of irrigating, you're not gonna keep it alive. Then maybe you pay into the tree fund and that goes to planting somewhere else. It goes to parks or, you know, if we end up with a tree commission or something, then they use that money. Still benefits the community, but it doesn't put a a burden Then they use that money, still benefits the community, but it doesn't put a a burden um on on an individual homeowner or something.
So just a fall, one final thought, if it's a, it uh sounds like the city staff. From a staff perspective, really want irrigation. And then just as a quick little side, if um and just to be devil's advocate.
Sure.
But if if bonds are too hard to call. In general, you should look for a different mechanism. I mean, because because it's hard, it's kind of a cop out, I feel like. And I get it, we have to call bonds before too from tenants and it's a pain, because typically I have to go to court sometimes. But if that's not the right mechanism to hold people accountable, don't just say it's too hard, look for a different mechanism.
No, I I I take your point and we get bonds all the time for all of our public work stuff is all bonded and anything that. Um, yeah.
I haven't had to call a bond. I had to fight with people about doing the landscaping that was required, but.
Yeah.
In my own way, I think.
No, I guess I guess my point is just, I don't necessarily see that that's. Like, okay, you don't have to irrigate, you know, just just post a bond. I just don't know that we want to necessarily. Encourage that as as an equal option. Um but no, of course we can call one and and. And we have, it's it's not fun, but we we have. Um and but I I I take your point. Um that's, yeah.
Roxanne, could you go to the next slide? I think that next one uh option might uh.
It's really small, sorry.
Well, wasn't there one more standard that you talked about? Oh, I guess that was the.
Yeah, so um I can just read this out, so the so we look just looked at the definition, so this kind of goes into. Just kind of spelling out your potential irrigation standards, so. The intent of the standard is to ensure that plants will survive a critical establishment period when they are most vulnerable. All required plantings must provide an irrigation system using either option one, two, three, or a combination of those options, so. Little flexibility.
Roxanne, what was uh option three?
Um so I'll I'll just go through the options. So option one is a permanent built-in irrigation. Irrigation system with an automatic controller designed and certified by a licensed landscape architect as part of a landscape plan. Option two, an irrigation system designed and certified by a licensed landscape ar- architect. As part of the landscape plan, which provides sufficient water to ensure the plants will become established. The system does not have to be permanent if the plants chosen can survive adequately on their own once established. Uh option three, irrigation by hand, which includes the use of water bags. If the applicant chooses this option, inspection will be required one year after final inspection to insert ensure the landscaping has become established. So um and then it goes on further to just say you need to specify which irrigation option you're gonna use in your landscaper tree plan. And um just kind of gives a couple of different rig uh guidelines. For how the irrigation system should operate.
So that option three was what I was thinking about there was that it's, if you can't do one of the first two. That's that's where you go, and that's probably gonna be a lot more expensive in the long run, but. It is, it is another way to do it.
Yeah, so, I don't, in that one uh example that I have of. Just trying to get folks to comply, um you know, you could point to, well, this is an option for you, you know, irrigation by hand. You don't have to have any special equipment, but we will be back out there after a year to see that the trees survive. Yeah.
How how do we encourage kind of, I would think we wanna encourage kind of that last era of what, right? Plantings with low water usage and natives that only needed a minimal amount.
Yeah, zero escaping.
Water irrigation. Do we have that anywhere?
Um, I think we don't really have.
Incorporate that.
Instead of. Yeah, we don't have a zero escape kind of like incentive or uh benefit right now. Um it would be really nice to see more of that.
I mean, kind of for this, if you wanna go that direction, it would be. Option three, which requires another inspection, which is. Wouldn't be the end of the world for people, but it would be a lot a lot less costly than an irrigation system.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the incentive or.
Yeah, we could think about it and so does. Okay, uh Commissioner Bradbury.
Yes, I I think it might have been Tom who noted that uh. He wasn't sure that we even needed a a standard for irrigation. I I agree with that reading over this. Uh I I think that if we're gonna do anything with irrigation at all, just simply a a a statement that uh. All approved plantings will will need to have an irrigation system that will ensure that. The the plantings will survive some specified period of time, one year, three years, five years. Uh and then the the exception block at the bottom of this page, I think is appropriate, but. I I I just don't think we need to to really dig beneath the dirt here. Uh with how somebody is supposed to water plants to keep them alive, that that that's kind of self-evident. So that that's my comment there.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Saltus.
I think I'm gonna um. Say this a little differently, that I don't really totally agree with Tom and Larry on this one. Um but first of all, I wanted to say that I think we can be, we have different definitions, they think that we're required for. Development projects versus residential projects and that kind of comment carries throughout the whole urban forestry management plan. I I am personally most concerned that the trees and the vegetation and the new developments are done properly. I'm much less concerned that a guy cuts a tree out of his backyard and doesn't replace it. And he gets in trouble with the law. Uh the what we really wanna do in terms of the the city is we wanna maintain. The earth, the the forest canopy, the broad forest canopy. And losing a tree here and there in somebody's backyard is, I guess it's bad, but we really wanna make sure that we don't lose acres when they put in a. Five hundred unit development. And having said that, I think putting a strict uh regulation there about irrigation systems. Is the best way to ensure that those plants survive. Um let's face it, it's getting. Dryer and drier and drier out here and we're gonna need more and more irrigation to keep plants and trees alive. So I don't have any problem with a requirement that they do irrigation for uh developments of some size or most sizes. And that uh it has to go for five years or whatever the right term is until they establish. Uh some viability and then they can cut it off if they if they want to. But I think giving them some time and making that a requirement is the right thing to do, especially for develop uh major developments.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um we could, we could maybe make this more specific to major development.
Commissioner Snodgrass.
And it's not, everything for now is just going to say I agree with with Commissioner Saltus that I like having these. What the options are and kind of the requirement, especially. Development, larger developments have an option one or option two on there. Um. And I also like the idea of, I realize it's probably a lot of work for you guys, but seeing if you can find a way to incentivize zero escaping. Minimize the requirements to to water at such a level that it becomes. Because of what Commissioner Saltus said, but it is getting higher.
Right.
Water is a sugar source.
Right.
Commissioner George.
I was the third, third that. Exactly what I was thinking um for development, absolutely. I I can't, um I would, I don't think I'd have uh feel this, you know, like uh if I cut down a tree. I have to go hire a landscape architect and designer, springboard system. That just seems really onerous.
Yeah.
So so I hope we can get there.
Okay, yeah, good. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Actually, do you have the direction you need now, or should I take?
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, any further comments on this? We got a couple more points.
Okay, I I would tend to agree to also with the area, this is, it should be directed toward large development rather than backyards.
Okay, that makes sense.
How how well does enforcement work currently with developments?
With developments, we go out and we do inspections pretty regularly and it's like, it's not just planning out there, you know, public works, building. L and I is out there, so there's a couple, there's a number of chances to catch something. Um. And then we also, you know, we put reminders in the planning system to do. Uh landscape.
Periodic checks.
Um and also for critical, critical area delineations, we go out and we inspect on those types of things as well.
You're apparently confident that the uh the enforcement side of it is uh alive and well and can handle. Checking up on these things after the in the second, third year.
I can speak from personal experience, I fought with the developer for six months. My first six months was spent fighting with the developer to get them to replant and pull out weeds. We got there.
Stay strong.
Yeah, that is some of, those are some of the most annoying conversations.
I wonder if you, I'm sorry, if you work with the local nursery and and if it was the indigenous plant material. They could give us a little discount or something, like maybe the city could get a grant and homeowners could get a little discount if they bought those kinds of plants.
There is one.
Well, there's the Pierce County Conservation Corps, they do a native plant sale every year, yeah. Speaking of cool.
We can help point people in that direction.
Sure.
Is it Woodbrook Nursery?
They'll actually actually analyze your property.
Unmated vegetation, they literally won't sell anything that isn't native.
Not Woodbrook?
I think it's Woodbrook, I'm not sure.
Okay, that's cool. Be a nice synergy with this thing.
Everybody go to the next page, everybody?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so um. Formalizing an incentive and variance system, this is a little bit open-ended, but basically. To Robin's point that we kind of end up using a certain like tool. A lot more than we think so, the alternative landscape plan gets used a lot. To uh make exceptions for landscaping and it doesn't really, it's an administrative. Process and it has a pretty low bar. Um and it really allows people to. Uh not necessarily get out of, but um it is, it is a, it prevents, presents flexibility as well. But um, yeah, again, it's a pretty low bar to get out of uh landscaping requirements and. It also doesn't provide, we don't have any kind of incentive system. For developments that project, uh protect, oh, it should not be projects, that protect and preserve more trees. Um so. We're proposing to use the administrative variance system rather than the alternative landscape. System uh landscape plan process. Um the administrative variance would just present a higher bar and it would have. Public noticing. Um. Uh to and and would just kind of like consolidate processes, we wouldn't have this weird other administrative process. Specific only to landscape. Um, yeah. Uh go ahead.
Well, maybe this answers it, but like, uh again, we're talking about the development, right? Yeah, so this would apply to.
Yeah, thank you, good point.
And um uh even if you, what whatever the variance process, I'm really curious what the tree, the landscape variance questions are, but um. You should, even if you are successful, you should contribute to some sort of plan, I think, a lot.
Hmm, yeah.
Where, uh you know, um the city is gonna bank that money and go plant trees somewhere else. That's just. So there's some financials kind of in it.
Yeah.
Even when they're successful.
I I like that, that would incentivize people to maybe work a little harder to. Yeah, I like that.
Are you thinking maybe a sliding scale so that there's a lower fee for those that are successful and a higher fee for those that are not?
No, I was thinking that like um the city staff could probably analyze and say, okay, you've got a hundred foot buffer here, one one long buffer. By fifty feet, you know, that's probably gonna be so much per square foot if you're in a landscaper per our standards. If you're claiming you can't do that, calculate that what that a percentage of what that fee is. If they meet the criteria through the variance process, which I think they're proposing to make a little bit more harder to get through. Even if they're successful, they would have to pay some into a fund that the city would then go use to plant trees somewhere else. Okay, gotcha. That's.
Yeah, I like it. Um so here we have, this is basically a reworking of the alternative landscape plan. Section, removing one of the parts which was just really too liberal. But these are just present some of the um. Some of the carrots that you could get by providing a superior result. So preserving more trees uh than uh required, even if you're kind of. Uh deviating from the standards, so um if you can preserve some growths, uh then you. It but uh. Meet a a lot of the other landscaping requirements. Um you can get uh like a reduced landscaping. Buffer. Um you can redo, get reduced parking stall dimensions, because parking is one of the most. Expensive parts of development, um or will allow you to encroach into required setbacks if you can save more trees. So just.
Don't understand the last part of the last sentence, the one in front of season C. Yeah, to subject to zone transition standards is what I don't.
So zone transition is one of those buffer things where we need a forty feet of. Buffer between forty feet of vegetative buffer.
So you're saying they can't approach into a buffer?
Yeah.
Okay.
So these are just three examples of incentives that we could give to folks that. Do do a little bit better than required, but I'm very open to um. You know, other kinds of incentives.
What about it?
Here it's or sticks.
Increased uh density.
Um yeah, that's. We'd know, we talked about that last time with uh cluster development.
Aren't we gonna be in that situation anyway, did that uh bill pass through the legislature, do it or? And they have to allow duplexes, fourplexes, the board.
I have to look, but it's it's really possible, I, you know. But it's. You know, where that happens and um, yeah, but yeah, that's that's gonna be a big, a big lift. Yeah, when we get into the continent.
I can look into how that.
Yeah.
Increase density might work with these new regulations.
Yeah.
Is it simply wait, maybe it's here, just like, you've got a a a vacant lot that's vegetated. Uh some percentage of the existing tree canopy remains. And that'd be a simpler way to calculate what what kind of incentivize, like you said, forty percent of the existing tree canopy.
We currently say it's not by canopy, it's, you have to incorporate twenty-five percent uh significant trees.
Okay.
Um in the in the setbacks, like in the buffer area. Um one thing that I personally don't like too much about, like constraining retention to the buffer is then. Then the middle gets wiped out and it doesn't, and it also frames trees. In the code as like only valuable for screening, it doesn't like incorporate all of the other benefits that trees have.
Will we be able to deal with that uh in the um? Air escape, you know, the other plan that we're looking at right now, which is the climate change plan.
Yeah, and the um, I mean, the urban forestry management, that I think will. Have some guidance as well, so um. Yeah, there's a couple of things coming down the pipe that will help us frame our position on. Um our urban ecology.
It's funny. I don't like the word variance in this title because I always think of a variance as something like the developmental balance. And this variance is what the city wants.
Okay.
Um so to me, variance in some ways have a, not a negative kind of motivation, but anyway, just a, just a thought.
Okay.
Uh it's definitely an incentive for sure.
Yeah. And this this part, now that I'm thinking about it a little bit more, it might not even need to be in the landscape. And this, this part, now that I'm thinking about it a little bit more, it might not even need to be in the landscape section. It could be just in the variance section because I know that the admin variance kind of goes out. The um, oh no wait, no, just never mind. Yeah, this is an incentive. Okay, um any inner thoughts on how to incentivize your attention?
Would you ever consider a reduction in development fees or anything like that if books were?
We haven't for this, but we were contemplating that for. Housing stuff, so that's certainly, certainly on the table.
Interesting. What about expedited permit?
We don't have enough. Couple more planners and yeah, I, I mean. Yeah, we don't, interestingly, I guess I, I certainly worked in jurisdictions where there was expedited. Um yeah, we can float it. I mean, there's no, no bad ideas, right? Yeah, it just, it would, it would be, it's harder, you know, with a, with a really small department than it would be, you know, in a county or something, but. If there's, if there's support for it, then you know, maybe we get another.
Well, maybe that, maybe the person who is doing the right thing gets moved to the front of the line.
I just don't know what else we would find to do.
Yeah, how do you determine if they're doing the right thing or not?
There is like, wait, but I, uh but we're doing.
Okay.
Twenty extra trees and they're only doing ten extra trees or whatever. I, again, there. Really, um yeah, that. That would get a lot of attention, for sure. Yeah. We certainly hear about how long it takes to get permits. Yeah. Um okay, any other thoughts on this one? So should the city enhance our maintenance piece? Um right now. Maintenance requirements are kind of split between the landscape code and the design manual, as with many of these things. Um so it would basically restructure the section, they have that in your um staff report, restructure the section for clarity. Uh and remove the maintenance requirements from the design manual, put them into the landscape code. Again, for I think just clarity and lack of overlap. Um any thoughts on that?
I would guess for that.
Okay.
It seems like a logical.
That's what I was hoping. Okay, yeah, that one's pretty straightforward. It's okay. Um so we talked about this one, a proactive forest management permit a little bit last time we met. Um this is something I found with the city of Lake Forest Park. So they have this permit that is basically. It's a plan for maintenance, management, preservation and enhancement of trees. Um and it includes a, an qualified arborist approach for maintenance, pruning, tree removal, tree planting. Over the course of five or more years, so when you enter into an agreement like this with the city. It's a notice on your title, so it's like recorded to your parcel and. It defines how you're going to maintain the forest over five or more years. I mean, that's something that the property owner and the city can uh work on together, you know, the scale of the agreement. Um Lake Forest Park has uh procedures to amend the. These agreements if, if so needed, but it would require sign off by the city arborist. And the planning director, you know, in their um. In, in their framework anyways.
I had a hard time understanding this one uh in terms of uh. Who cares uh? Why, why would the, why would the owner benefit from this? So would you talk a little bit more about. Where it might apply or maybe give an example or. And what triggers this?
Yeah, um I think it would need to be from a property owner that wants to steward something. Or for a development that has, in any major development that has a lot of trees. Maybe this is part of the incentives, like, okay, you can't plant everything now, but maybe you plant it over a five year period, something like that. Um. Uh I'm not really sure from the Lake Forest Park application, I haven't called anyone over there yet to see how they. Um apply this, but I think there were some questions. At the last meeting, you know, like what if we do have someone that's really interested in long term steward, stewardship? How do we like help them or support them in that? And this would be that type of mechanism. Commissioner Sargass?
You said this is something that is tied to the title? Okay, as someone who. Sounds property and the impact from title to valuation, this is a whole game nightmare.
I think that's part of the incentive of like following through with it. And also I think that would mean that it, you know, it wouldn't just. Like whoever bought it would need to kind of comply with the plan, like you have to be pretty serious about it.
That I would have to then try to quantify. And so there's five plus years and what's required in the impact on. On value or things when someone, when that property transacts becomes a lot of questions.
Right, and I, yeah, I've experienced that and it's, it, it's part of the balancing. So that is the way that we provide constructive notice to the next, to the purchaser, that they're obligated to. Maintain this and, and I mean, we do, we do have folks record different, you know, declarations and restrictions and things. Um and this would act like that, that's, that's the, the downside, is that some. Braziers, lenders, purchasers, they look at that and say, uh. And you know, depending on the housing market, you know, that, that can be an issue, but it, it really is the only way. Uh it's like, you know, conditions of approval of a, of a permit, you don't have a way of. Providing constructive notice to, to a purchaser to know what they're obligated for, so it's, it's part of the discussion, for sure.
That would also kind of negate the use of this by a homeowner's association.
That's possible. That is possible.
I'm still confused, what, what? I have a five acre property, I want to build a house, I'm just, why would? Why would I, why would any individual want to do this? What's the, what's the purpose of this? I'm just confused, like what benefit is, is it for the property owner?
We could either call Lake Forest Park and figure that out. Something like that, like a, like a conservation easement or something like that, you, there's usually a, a property tax benefit of some sort. Um that's the most common benefit.
Um so I wanna, I wanna reduce my property taxes, I put my property into a conservation.
In. Or private or whatever.
I, yeah, I just, um.
Well, I think this would also be for large, like if you had a five acre wooden lot that you weren't developing.
Right.
You needed to, wanted to maintain at a certain level. Instead of having to go in and get a permit to cut down a tree, this would be a defined.
Oh, yeah.
A defined um. Plan to manage that property over five, ten year period, what have you. Agreement with the city that you're gonna be a good supporter of this land.
Yeah.
Forestry wise.
Could potentially save money in the long run.
What's that?
Could potentially save money in permitting in the long run. With the higher end arborist one time.
Simplifies your man. Now, what the incentive is for you to do that, like maybe the permits or.
So you said something that it, it wouldn't incentivize an HOA, but it, but the HOA usually stewards like common areas.
Right, and uh how does a HOA hold title to a common area? Do they, the common areas, I don't know.
Uh Commissioner Saltus had earlier mentioned about the uh buffer around Harvard Hill. So who is responsible for maintaining that? Is that their homeowners association? I think this, that's where this would practically make the most sense. Is applying this to homeowners association.
Hmm, yeah.
But I guess when I, I think I had mentioned the HOA last week when we talked about. Seems like the benefit of the HOA is not only the common areas, but also the, the, the assistance in managing them. That they can give to the other, the actual homeowners and their, the trees they have on their property.
Mm-hmm.
Also, which this wouldn't necessarily. Form that with, and without them having to. You know, attach to their titles, but it seemed to be much more complicated.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we flesh this one out a little bit more. Yeah, there seemed to be some interest from it last time, so I just wanted to bring it forward as one example of how this could work. I could also do, if there's more interest, I could try and find other examples of how these kinds of. Um kind of stewardship type permits or agreements were.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in this because I'm on the board of the HOA and um. We've got some dead trees that are gonna need to be removed, uh and um I've got some members of the HOA saying. We don't really have to replant those, do we? And uh I kind of would like.
You just tattled on.
I would kind of like to have some teeth in there that would say.
Yeah, or at least having a plan to maintain it.
Right.
Yeah, and it's help is.
Right.
But I don't think that's what this is, that's more of the landscape buffer standards. The previous slide, I think, this is more about you've got a large chunk of undeveloped property, how can we? Help each other keep that uh flourishing, you know, forest. To have both.
Understand how this works.
Yeah, I can see it applying to both.
So maybe a call to Lake Forest.
Yeah.
Yep. That sounds like.
Figure out why the heck they have it.
What, maybe let me try one more time, what problem are we trying to solve?
Uh.
And I realize this was our recommendation and you're just trying to answer our question, but like what was the, what, what? What problem are we trying to fix?
I think like long range stewardship, like how do we incentivize that type of long range stewardship? Um yeah, but maybe that's not actually a problem.
I mean, we're a small city, we're, we're a city that's developed, it's growing by leaps and bounds. Um will it be a lot of properties big enough to you, I mean, utilize this as a. As a tool and then more staff time involved and manage it.
Yeah.
It's a genius work, it's sweet, maybe it's because I don't understand it.
Yeah.
Well, you probably wouldn't use it that frequently, but I could see somebody who's a very, very much an environmentalist. Has maybe a one acre flat in the city and wants to see that preserved in perpetuity, so that if they're gone. It keeps in, it keeps uh.
So that's another option.
Roxanne?
Yeah.
Has the Davy Group uh calculated the forest cover yet? Are they, do we know how much acres we're talking about in terms of still canopy land here in Gig Harbor? Because that might answer some of our questions, how many, how many plots of that of a significant size do we still have left that uh? This kind of thing might be workable for?
We have about forty-four percent canopy cover, I'm not sure what that isn't acres.
I'm guessing a large amount of that is far from owned by.
Yeah, do we want to add to that? It's forty-four below where we want it.
Forty-four is actually really good for um so comparable, you just thought this area, yeah.
Is there still that USA Tree City thing that like almost for a while and some sort of percentage of canopy required?
Uh they don't have a percentage of canopy required, um at least not anymore, maybe that's. Maybe they were, that was a challenge for uh people to subscribe, but yeah, it's, it's a pretty low bar to be a tree city. Just kind of have to show a commitment to urban forestry. Um so. Um sorry, Commissioner Saltus, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, you kind of, you're starting to narrow it in here, I mean, some of that forty-four percent is public parks and things like that, probably. But there's probably still a significant amount of private ownership of that uh forest, it can be. I, I'm sure that as they do the inventory downstream, we'll know the, all those specifics, I'm just kind of curious about the ballpark figures. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, that was my last topic, unless anyone has more about the proactive forest management permit? Yeah, okay, great.
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make, just for your consideration.
Okay.
How's the survey coming along? Response, number of responses, but you're saying like.
Last I checked, we were at like two thirty-five or so.
That's not a lot, two weeks ago, that's.
Yeah, we had um postcard mailers go out, maybe some of you got them? No? Okay, maybe they're on the way, I would hope. Uh yeah, we sent out a bunch of postcard mailers.
The, the, the next thing is. Um looking at everything that you've produced so far, that the public has seen. I think that you've got an opportunity to do a uh. A more effective selling job on, on the whole uh program. And I wonder whether you, you can specify or figure out. What document, what report, what measure might be the best place to do that selling job?
What am I selling?
You're selling the urban forestry management plan.
Okay, well, the plan is going to be a document that will be publicly available.
Yeah, but my concern is that what I've seen so far doesn't. Do a lot of selling, like what's in it for me, what are the benefits of doing this? What are the definitions of things, so people understand what urban forest management might include? Where, where people might understand better what we're talking about when we talk about canopy, because. I think about canopy in terms of the, the rainforest in Brazil with snakes and monkeys and things like that. Scampering around a hundred feet up, and I don't really know what we mean when we use that term sometimes. So my, my suggestion is that you, you pick the, the best media. To do a real selling job on this with, you know, features, benefits, et cetera. So that uh i- i- it, it gets as much support as it deserves, I think it deserves a, a lot of support. But looking at the website, uh looking at the questionnaire, I, I, I don't get a feeling that it's. You know, generating as much support as it could deserve. Um and I, I, in particular, I spend some time making sure that you've got clear and. Uh easily understood definitions of all of these things. Uh I, I could see this incentive plan, for example, being, being started out by, with, with a couple of uh. Statements that uh why would we, why would we need an incentive plan? Who might be interested in participating in this? What would the benefits be to the landowner and to the city and to the environment and rest of it? And then, and then getting into the details. Come on, am I making sense here? Okay, I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Is there a resolution that supports this ever, like a tree canopy or tree res- is there any kind of resolution? Behind this, because the whereas is may have some of the reasons why.
Um I mean, the council in their, so twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Priority action plan, wanted to prioritize urban forestry planning. I don't think that tree ordinance was specific in that, but um. We had the ordinance review as part of our contract with Davy Resources Group and um. They didn't go as like deep as we were hoping, and so. Bringing it to all of you is hoping to get like more feedback, because the urban forestry management plan, we're not, it's not gonna have any teeth that we don't have. And then that's true with everything, right? You have the, the goals and policy, um sort of uh objectives and then. And then the meat is in the order.
and then the meat is in the ordinance. That's where we implement all of those more lofty goals and and the things that we're striving for. Um, and I don't even know this, I haven't, I haven't been dialed into it, but um, uh is or was the urban forestry plan adopted quarterly or will it be?
Uh, it will be adopted.
It would be adopted by resolution, right?
We're not getting a draft until like the end of this month.
Right.
So so it's still in process. I'll bring it back. I'll bring the plan back to you all. Next month, we'll talk about the goals and the actions um that are proposed in the plan. And then I think also, once we have a good set of like goals and strategies, then we can further refine the ordinance, the tree ordinance, because we'll have like a little bit more of a guidepost.
Right.
I'm bringing a lot of things that are just been like percolating for a really long time and that have been planners for a really long time.
Right.
Like, these are things that like need to change regardless of the goals of the plan. That might have been a good framework for the last time.
Right, and and this, it is, it's unusual to to, you know, be bringing you both the policy stuff and then again, the meat, the the actual uh the ordinance changes. Usually there's more uh, more downtime in between, but this is uh, it's a huge priority for the city council. And trees, 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 that makes up a large percentage of the phone calls they get and it's what we hear. So there's no question that this, uh, you know, we have to do this. The the ordinance, um, I don't even know if if we were expecting to have all the ordinance language come from Davy initially or not, but.
Not that they would have done more like an intensive job, but.
Yeah.
I think Commissioner's correct. I mean.
Yeah.
Then I realize that the comp plan or where was policy ordinances and then this is the code. And code's not very, code's, you know, do this, go do that. But this is a great opportunity to educate the public.
Yep.
And and your words were selling it, Commissioner. I I I think of it as more of like the the why behind this. And we should take every opportunity, and I know the code isn't the best place to do that, but every time we're talking about it, to educate the public about why this is important.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Salters.
Um, I wanted to kind of ping off what Tom started us out on and it's it's really important and I I kind of look, because I see the whole world through climate change. But this is a actually a very important part of climate change for our small community. But the concepts of co-benefits is pretty important when you put together a climate action plan because you're doing one good thing about the climate and it does all these other good things besides. Yeah, I did have, I was writing down today, we, we're concerned about the loss of trees. That's what this is all about. Okay, well, you don't get concerned about the law, what about the loss of trees is worrisome? And that's where I think you can start to lay out some things like, well, water retention, soil stabilization, cooling qualities, carbon se- sequestration, visual buffer, uh, visual buffering and beauty. Those kind of things are the com- the components of a loss of of the canopy. So injecting those somehow in the narrative tells people, this is why we're concerned about the loss of trees. Uh, and there's some really good reasons why saving trees saves a lot of other things as well for our community. So it's not just a tree, it's the air, it's the water, it's the soil, it's everything is is kind of tied together there. So I I grew up Tom and I'm not sure what the right place is on on this management plan, but I suspect that Davy's already got those words somewhere. Maybe Roxanne, you've already been working with him on that, but that's part of your your selling strategy in my mind. It's explaining why it's important.
I would add to what Commissioner Salters says, privacy is another issue, uh, another good reason for retaining trees. Just have some kind of visual screens that Commissioner Snodgrass has had her in.
But it ties into this, because I don't have the benefit of your experience. What are people, you say it it makes up the bulk of the calls, but not that you get. Is, can you sum up in like, you know, one concern or three concerns that that you just hear repeated over and over and over?
We're losing our trees. They're cutting down trees, they clear cut some of the things that that we've talked about in here.
Right, you're letting and and oftentimes.
Do those people who are complaining, do they just see trees coming down near their property or do they really understand what the loss of trees is?
I think both, to be fair, I, you know, and I don't, I don't talk to them all, obviously, and because um, it there's, you know, for every call, there's a different story. So sometimes it is, I mean, Michelle gets calls when somebody hears, you know, a chainsaw startup. So, you know, but but in general, there is a sense, I think, that and and a lot of this, again, we've talked about it in here. Uh, is is attached to the larger developments that people are not happy about that that were, you know, passed and now they're building them or whatever. So it's it's a sense that, and it could be tied into other things, changing, you know, the character of of Gig Harbor. And we have, you know, larger developments and it never used to be that way. So it's always a mixture, but the but the focus has been on the loss of trees.
Say, you know, that would, that would guide how we craft the message, but I would almost want to separate the idea of development in trees.
In.
One, because the impression that I got from what you just said, that people associate all development and all lots of trees and the message, I almost wonder if it's not so much the lock of trees as it's I don't like development.
Right.
And I would want to separate those two.
Absolutely. That takes going out into the community and having conversations. And we've started here. We we do plan, going out into the community very soon. We're 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 going to get our website squared away with the comp plan and with um climate action plan and and we're gonna we're gonna work on um on our our messaging and and the way we get the message out. Um, this is, this is still pretty early for us, generally speaking, to to, you know, flesh this stuff out with you folks, but we we absolutely have to um let people know what we're doing and why. And why they should care and why their voices should be a part of this. Um, that's true of of all of the work that we're, you know, undertaking over the next couple of years and beyond. Um, and that, but it does, it does take some some, you know, resources and and we have not. We've had some setbacks, um, you know, with some some sapping and, you know, we were starting to gear up for a a website uh, for the comp plan and and the person who was helping us left and and we haven't, you know, we haven't been able to plug all those gaps. And and I'm sorry, it sounds like I'm making excuses. We know what, you know, we hear you and we agree. And we've been thinking about the messaging too. I did want to say, and this is so just, I don't know, connected um to to your comment, Commissioner Brown, but and maybe it's a small thing and maybe it's just a planner thing and so, you know, planner brain is different than other brains, but in the intent statement of of the proposed ordinance, it lists all of the things that we've been talking about, all of the great benefits of trees. And it's never done that, but it doesn't do that now. And so when people look at our tree ordinance, the first thing they see is this statement about why we should care, why we do care and why we need to take this really seriously. And it incorporates all of the things that we have been talking about. That alone may seem like a small thing. It's a paragraph. But it's not existed until, you know, until we started talking about it now. And so that's where we start. That paragraph is what we, you know, put on a postcard or put on a, you know, slide deck and say, these are the reasons. And and we know that all of you care about all of these things, so let's work on how we get there. That doesn't make it too convoluted, too, you know, complex or onerous for uh, you know, one property owner on a, you know, average sized lot or whatever. Um, how do we do this? So I totally agree, our messaging has, you know, we're we're working on it, but I agree with with everything that you said.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Salters enunciated those very, very well.
Yeah.
In terms of saying, these are the reasons.
Yep. Does you have another comment, Commissioner Salters? You had your hand up.
I tapped out, Roxanne, sorry.
All good.
Okay, any other party comments for Roxanne before we leave this topic? Because I know Robin has something that she would like to uh discuss.
Yeah, I I it is, and I'm sorry I didn't uh agendize it because it it really is uh just an extension of of what we were talking about uh previously in terms of the comp plan. Um, we we are finally uh sitting down with the entire uh consulting team um, to to put some more um, to kind of flesh out the public participation plan. And and what the consultants uh and and myself and and other members of the team um, are now working on are the important stakeholder like names, contacts, people. I I know about a lot of the groups uh in this community and, you know, the uh downtown folks and the chamber and and some of the sort of regular players. What I don't know are neighborhood organizations um, that I haven't, you know, touched. Um, not necessarily HOAs, but um, I mean, not that HOAs are, you know, out of the mix. Um, but I need to put together a a list of folks that the consultant will put on their timeframe uh in terms of reaching out, doing interviews uh as the first pass on our public participation plan. Um, because if we can get to the folks like everybody in this room who know people who are out in the community, um, that trickles down. Um, and as we, you know, ramp up the the website, um, we will be able to, you know, give people uh opportunities for connecting and getting a mailing list and all of that, but I have to start with um, uh, the folks that uh that are are leaders really in groups. So I'm asking um for uh for you know, a kind of brain dump. Uh, it doesn't have to be tonight, it could be over the next couple of weeks or whatever. But if you can pass along names, groups, um, folks that particularly, you know, may not. I mean, everybody knows about the chamber, but folks may know, not know about, you know, friends of Main Street or whatever, you know, the the sort of more neighborhood groups. Does that, does that make sense? And what are your thoughts about uh uh coming up with some some of those contacts? Youth groups, schools, if you know, teachers, administrators. I mean, again, we know some of the folks, you know, at at district level, but I I want to get sort of more grassroots.
There was a group that was doing some fundraising, and I can't remember the name, but I could probably find it for you. And I think it might have something to do with the park that the city purchased here.
Get cover conservation land fund, get cover. Land Conservation Fund.
Okay.
Are there any churches that would be around?
Safe-based organizations. I've got a list of churches in and around. It doesn't have to necessarily be just within the city limits if, you know, folks, folks go.
Assuming based on what you listed off, the sports leagues, the youth sports leagues, cover soccer, cover little league. See, I don't have kids, so they're they're very active and they're very interested in moving into land use and how it's.
The kayak club is a pretty big deal too.
Kayak Club or Dragon Boat or shit.
Jason knows all those groups.
I was gonna, I I was, I didn't want to single you out, but yeah. Yeah, I know you know.
Well, I'm happy to give you my ideas.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, it doesn't have to be right now, tonight. Um, I just really want everybody to to think, because I I just, I don't, you know, I haven't been here long enough to know all of all of those groups and all the the folks and individuals. Um, leaders of these organizations, um, and we'll we'll reach out and, um, you know, make sure that we can contact everybody. But um, to the extent that you're talking to folks, um, you know, you're the ambassadors as well. So um, this is this, within the next couple of weeks, we'll we'll start reaching out.
I would also say the Y N C A.
The Y.
Has any list been kept of those people that have contacted you on this subject?
That's a great question. I, I mean, I have, I have my own list. I I had to get emails occasionally and I've gotten a couple of phone calls. Um, and so those are folks that are going to be on our mailing list once we have, really, the 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 website has has been, it's been a disappointment not to be able to to get that jump started a bit earlier, but um, we're gonna, we're just gonna make it happen. May not be as pretty as uh something done by, you know, I don't know, it'll be pretty because because Rocky's gonna help. It's still an open question.
And I'm sure it's not the entire city. We usually draw a circle, like a thousand people.
Right, 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 right. Um, it's it's still an open question because uh, can we talk about that in here?
Our site specific is three hundred feet down the parcel, but um.
Yeah, it would be, it would be in the, you know, in the newspaper and stuff. That's a little ways down the line, right? And then again, that's still an open question. It really depends on whether this is uh, programmatic, um, doing CIPA for the comp plan itself, which we haven't done in the past. And and you can sort of, there there's a benefit to doing that, but it is, it would increase the cost tremendously. And and our budget is is kind of small for this project because we're small. Um, so we would probably not, or if we did, it would be, uh, it would be limited. So just, I think, just to flesh that out a little bit more, if if we uh evaluate the impact of all the changes to every element that we're changing in the comp plan. Um, the benefit would be that folks, developers or or, you know, folks that wanted to do different projects could rely on that CIPA document, E I S, um, most likely. Uh, and not have to do their own C for individual projects. But again, um, it's it's a pretty huge undertaking. So we're we're exploring that with the consultants um to see kind of pros and cons, but we we need to add to the budget pretty significantly. But that's a good question. Um.
Next door, the website.
I thought about that. We talked about that. I've had such weird experiences.
There are several other governmental entities that put stuff on there.
That's really.
You may get a few snarky comments.
Yeah, um, yes, yeah, that's uh, that's good. And I I, yeah. Kind of hoping that we, we have a Facebook page, but we don't have a Twitter account. We don't have Instagram. We, you know, it's and so Facebook for some is like, really, that's all, you know, to get that from my nieces and nephews who think that's for old people, which hurts my feelings, but. Anyway, other social media uh avenues, um, for sure. Um, but there's also, and and again, this is, because I'm a different generation. Um, I keep thinking, you know, uh, of face to face and or Zoom or something and getting some of these folks, representatives from some of these groups, parents groups, teachers group, and all of these, you know, and 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 talking to them like we're talking now. And we will be able to do some of that where we go out to, especially as the weather gets better, we have more outdoor events and farmers markets and stuff like that. Um, not to say that we're going to be able to go out every weekend, um, you know, to do some tabling. Um, but we can have um literature to give out, maybe even to other folks in this room to say, if you're going to, you know, X Y Z event, you know, here's some, here's some material that maybe you can uh hand out to folks. So um, I will be uh asking you then to to help us in this, in this effort of getting the word out. Um, and we'll have a a platform for folks to then come back to us and and then we start exchanging.
Speaking of events, don't we have something coming up?
Patterson's.
A workshop?
Climate.
Climate action workshop?
No, the senior tax one is coming up too.
Okay.
I think it's a climate action workshop.
You're thinking climate.
Yeah, and uh.
Yes.
Anyone else there? And date and time and place?
Uh, yeah, it's uh March twenty-ninth. The um, sign up for the Zoom link is on the climate action. is on the Climate Action website webpage on our website. Um, and if anyone wants to be a facilitator, I can look you in and get you a facilitator packet. It's just, you read through it the day before and it's not gonna be a huge load.
Can we do it in person rather than Zoom?
No.
I know, I know. See, that's me too. I know, that's.
Well, it'd be a public meeting, so it doesn't matter for them, cause you already noticed it.
Oh wait, no, it's not being noticed. Sorry.
I think we have a quorum, you don't have to notice it.
Yeah, that could be a little bit.
I guess so. Yeah, I was thinking it was. Yeah, so. So some of you, but some of you could go, just not all of you.
Some of you did that better interconnect connections than I.
Um, another quick question, uh, and forgive me if you've already shared this, but an overall timeline of the complan update would be really, really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. So we know the end date um is uh December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Um, there, I've got a timeline that, um, that we got. I can't remember if he put it up when, when Bill was here, Phil Grimes uh did his presentation a few weeks ago.
Yeah, kind of like milestones, um, public engagement, commission, uh, city council check-ins, things like that. Just a little more fleshed.
I will, I will, um, I'll send out what, what I have. I, yeah, and actually, um, uh, Bill and his team are putting together um a, a formal public participation plan. Um, I have a, I have a timeframe, a timeline, I should say. Um, it doesn't have all of the, the meeting dates in there, but um, but it has some sort of uh milestones.
Ryan, would you maybe email us?
I will email you.
And then he, uh, what would really be helpful is to see the big picture, what we just described, but like decisions or recommendations from the planning commission, like when do those fit into that process? So that we can start to prepare ourselves for.
Yeah, it's mostly gonna be information sharing and, and, and gleaming ideas and doing sort of what, um, what Roxy has been doing with this in terms of decision making, that's gonna come toward the end, right? We're, we're gonna be, you know, data crunching and writing up stuff. We'll, we'll do some drafts, obviously, um, as, as early as we can, but that's gonna be um, middle of next year before we actually have things for you to make recommendations on. Um, but we'll be sharing, you know, bits and pieces as we go along. What, what is? What's a little bit still of, of a, open question is, I mean, we have the big chunks, so the elements that we know are most time intensive, probably the most impactful, housing. We talk about it all the time, affordable housing specifically. Um, luckily, we don't incorporate anything newly uh approved by legislation, but it's coming. And we still have a, a bunch of things in our housing element. So we have thirteen elements, right? We're not changing all of them necessarily, and we're not changing all of them to the same degree. Housing is gonna be the most changed from what it is now. And then land use, transportation, so um, so there's, there's a little bit of a question in my mind, uh, when we roll out those different pieces. We're still waiting for some, some data and some mandates to come down from the county and from the state about housing and what our allocation numbers are. And we can talk about that more if you want to drill into some of that and what it means. We've got consultants that are not specific to the complan um, that are working on the middle housing uh piece and, and then our, um, our housing needs assessment. I will bring those to you as they develop, and that will be within the next six months. Um, but so, housing, housing, housing. Um, and then the other piece is land use, transportation, um, environment, uh, those will probably, I mean, land use is probably next, but I'm, I'm trying to you don't wanna see everything at once. There's a lot. So, you know, housing, one meeting, a couple of meetings. We're, you know, maybe uh, we do transportation land use and then we come back to housing or something, so um, I, I need to, um, I need to check in with a couple of other jurisdictions, cause everybody's doing it a little bit differently. Um, and most of the jurisdictions I've been talking to uh are bigger than we are. So I, I need to do some more checking to see what's working for them, cause some of them are a bit ahead of us. Not everybody is ahead of us, it turns out.
From, I was wondering if there's any sort of logical sequence.
Yeah.
That this fits in, and maybe that's what you could get from the other jurisdictions.
Yeah, that sort of, that build, I mean, they're all, they intersect. But, I mean, everything builds on um the population data, frankly, right? I mean, I everything, but most things. Um, how many people are we expecting are going to move here in the next ten years, twenty years, beyond? Um, is that, everything derives from that. Transportation needs, um, more parks, more, you know, schools, whatever, more infrastructure spending. Um, so that's really where that's kind of the foundation. Um, I keep focusing on housing again because it, it is it's going to be so radically different in, in many ways from what we're used to. So it's gonna take the most community engagement, the most, yeah. Uh, discussion about what it means, cause there's some things we don't really have choices about. So, um, so that's, you know, it's, housing is on my brain more than anything else. Please.
Robin, when do you expect to get that housing inventory assessment done?
Uh, it was, it was scheduled to, to be finished this, this, at the end of this month. And um Department of Commerce through Pierce County at Curball. So part of this, so the, the, the housing needs assessment, the first part is done, which is, what do we have now? You know, who lives here, um, who's uh, you know, having a hard time paying their mortgage, um, broken down by race, by, by income. We have a lot of, a lot of that data. What we don't have is the gap analysis that tells us where we're gonna be, you know, in the next ten, twenty years as people move here. We don't know that because the targets have shifted. Um, and we will talk more about the nuts and bolts. I realize that this is, you know, if you haven't been involved uh in in housing um projections and, and how that's calculated, it's, it's a little bit, it can be a little bit dense, but you can look at what our population is going to be based on, um, you know, uh, countywide. And then say, well, the county's gonna grow by, you know, whatever, twenty percent. So every community must therefore also be growing by twenty percent. We know that's not real, right? Not everybody has been growing as fast as Gate Harbor over the past ten years even. Um, what I'm getting to is that those projections about not just how many people are going to live here in, you know, the next few decades, but what do those households look like and how many houses are they going to need? What the, what the Department of Commerce has done, and they just, just did this, I think, two weeks ago. So we, we're gonna use a different number than the number that the county has given you, Gate Harbor. We think that it doesn't account for second homes. Because if you have two homes, you really only have one household, but you have two homes. If, we don't think that the projections account for a shrinking household size. Maybe it was two point seven, now we think it's two point eight per household. Um, demographic changes and all the rest. So, so they came up with a number for Pierce County that uh for, for housing unit requirements that was fifty percent more than what Pierce County had come up with in their targets that they had already adopted. The, the county council had already adopted those targets, and we were using that roughly for our calculations. And now the, the Department of Commerce said, don't go writing, can anybody about? Cause we are compromised. We are finding a way. I know that's like, I mean, it's, it was alarming to us. It was alarming to many other communities who've been relying on these numbers for their complan updates. In a way, it's good that we're a little bit behind because we haven't done a bunch of work that we now have to undo. That is what is holding up the housing needs assessment. She needs those, those, our allocation to know how far away we are from where we're supposed to be. So she can, she, I, I deal with the principal of, of the um, or consultant. She can, she can do two different, like, well, if it's this number, it's this. If it's this number, it's that. And she can do that now, but I, I don't want them to be that far apart. So we're working, Pierce County and, and the Department of Commerce are talking about a compromise that lets us use a smaller increase than what Pierce County uh had already come up with. So once we have that approved, that that's what, what commerce is gonna let us do, then we will use that number, our consultant will put that into the housing needs assessment, and that will then be what our housing element incorporates into how much housing stock we need to accommodate. We're not building it, right? This, these are goals and policies, but we have to get out of the way. And that means, you know, potentially upping the density, all the things that we've been talking about.
Well, Robin, I, I'd like to ask you to think about whether it would make sense to schedule a uh discussion here in the future meetings on this subject and what, what do we know about housing today? And if, if housing is gonna be the big uh gorilla, then uh maybe it would be worthwhile for us to take a look at the front end of that housing study and uh maybe take a few steps toward understanding the housing venture better.
Yeah, and I, and, and the, um, uh, the principal at the uh consultant firm um, was planning on, you know, talking about some of this. We just hope that we would have numbers that we can rely on before you know, launching into that. But um, I'll, I'll see, uh, and maybe it's, uh, maybe it's somebody from Pierce County. I mean, a lot of folks are, are offering to help talk about this and deal with this and create, um, you know, a path through the chaos. So, um, uh, I will, I will see if I can get somebody, um, maybe even our next meeting, or maybe the one after that. We'll see what the timeframe is, but um, I'll, I'll, I'll bring somebody in to, to talk about this, maybe articulate it better than I can.
When, when do you think we might have a complan topic on the agenda for this meeting?
Other than just the, the public participation, cause it's really about public participation first. And, and.
Public participation.
Okay, next meeting.
Long bill's signing for the chair. Uh, and forgive me, staff already does this, but can we, like, before we close every meeting, is it possible us ask staff to uh tell us what the next meeting's gonna be about, or is there like a, a couple of month look ahead?
I usually have that on the agenda.
Do you?
Yeah. We didn't at this one, cause I just found out today with the next meeting's gonna be.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we've got next meeting on there and if you wanna elaborate a little bit on that. Unless there's any other, is there anything else on this subject that we could maybe move into that?
That.
Description of what's gonna be on next time. Anybody else have anything?
Well, we'll give it a go. Definitely public participation plan for the, the complan update, for sure. If I can work any housing stuff in there, I will um see what I can do, but it's a shortish timeframe. Um, and I think we'll have a, a draft of our urban forestry management plan for folks to look at. So, I think that'll, I think that'll use. Um, not that that's cool, but I, we have a lot to talk about with folks, so, um, but I'll have, um, I'll try to get the, the, the timeline stuff out to you. Um, it, it does tend to change a little bit here and there. And I'm gonna be meeting with the consultant tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning and his team um to talk more about where they're at and, and what the timeframe looks like for them right now. Um, but I'll, I'll get that out as soon as I can, um, hopefully before the next week.
Good. Yeah, we all understand that you have to be flexible with the times. Sometimes things just go better.
Yeah, like, I'm gonna comment. Yeah, so, don't say it. I, I love them. They work really hard, but this, this was a little bit of a curve ball.
And Roxanne, you're the person that we call if, uh, we have any questions about that upcoming uh workshop.
Yeah. Does everyone know how to find the project pages on the website? Okay, yeah, it serves the website for climate action plan or climate change. You should find the climate action plan website and the link to sign up for the workshop is there. We are, we are aiming, working slowly to um, to, to do a little better with some things on our, on our website, to make things a little easier to find than they are now. It's a bigger project, but.
There's always challenges with that, because what works for me might not work for, you know, other people.
That's true. That's true.
That's the way we think.
I appreciate.
And mostly you can go to the planning page and there on the left in the tab too.
Right, if you go to the planning, yeah, yeah. Planning page does all this stuff.
Okay, anything else uh to come before the body tonight? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries you down, Miss Lee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Safe travels.